Special meeting of the Board of Directors of Basca. At 6:30, and we're at the Chakuti Room in Millbrae. We have one member who's reported in live streaming using the traditional Brown actor rules. First item is called order, second item is roll call.
We'll try to minimize. Okay, on the roll call, Commissioner, or Director Andrews, sorry.
Present.
Director Chambers.
Present.
Director Duncan.
Present.
Director Hamilton.
Present.
Director Jordan.
Present.
Director Kiesel.
Here.
Director Lincoln. Director Manalo. Director Mellinger. Director Mickelson.
Here.
Director Montano.
Director Nash.
Here.
Director Piccolotti.
Present.
Director Pierce.
Here.
Director Ragsdale.
Here.
Director Schneider.
Present.
Director Showalter. Director Stevenson.
Here.
Director Stone. Director Vella.
Here.
Director Weed. Director Zichterman. We have core, there's 16.
Okay, next item is salute to the flag. So if we could stand, the flag is right behind me, so it gets me back in my head. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is comments from the chair. Welcome to our July Basca Board Meeting, and thank you for attending at this new temporary location. Hopefully, we will be back to our regular location. I understand we're booked through May there, but we'll see. Okay, thank you to Millbrae for making this room available to us. We'll be live streaming and do have actually one director participating remotely using traditional Brown actor rules, so proper microphone use is important. All votes will be by roll call. Tonight is primarily for reports and discussions. I'm particularly looking forward to the SFPUC report on affordability. It has been said by board members and members of the public affordability is becoming a problem. We have invested much in reliability and water quality, Reed, Wissup, and our CIPs, but have given, and we've given search to alternative water supplies known as AWS to meet future demands. So accordingly, our rate increases may not be over. Still, a fair price is part of our charter. Let's see what SFPUC is planning. More importantly, we need to direct where Basca should focus its efforts in the future. We can do this with discussions of Strategy 2050, which is a key part of our agenda tonight. Please participate freely. We will also have a water management rep report from Elizabeth Flegel, who should be able to highlight some of the steps Mountain View has taken to reduce water use and enhance our water supplies. We all benefit from wiser water use, particularly with the help of our new Tier 2 allocations and WSA amendment. Hopefully, we can better control AWS expenses and long-term water rates. I will also be soliciting your input, so I can put together our contractually required evaluation of our new CEO. Since Tom is relatively new, I do expect some directors will be submitting not observed for some of the traits, but I do hope to receive at least some inputs from all directors. Now, on with the show. Next item is Board Policy Committee Report, which will be given by?
Director Ragsdale.
Okay. Director Ragsdale.
Thank you. In Director Hardy's absence, Chair of Board Policy Committee, I will give an extremely brief report, which is the minutes in the packet reflect correctly our meeting, and also thank you to Peter Stevenson and Berlin Game for hosting us at the library, and we always appreciate their willingness to host. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next item is consent calendar. Actually, do we need any public comments on BPC report? Seeing none. Actually, that says number four. Number four, it's supposed to be five. Number four is consent calendar, or any, what's the desire on consent calendar? Anybody have a question or anything need to be pulled? Do I have a motion? Director Pierce?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
I second.
Director Vella, seconds. Any further discussion? Any public comments? Okay. Seeing none, roll call for vote on consent calendar.
Make sure we get them, one mics on at a time. Okay, Director Andrews.
Aye.
Director Chambers. Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Hamilton?
Aye.
Director Jordan?
Yes.
Director Kiesel?
Aye.
Director Manalo is walking in the room, sorry. She doesn't have a mic. I'll wait on her. Thank you.
I'll say aye. Thank you, aye.
Thank you. Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Director Montano?
Yes.
Director Nash?
Yes.
Director Piccolotti?
Aye.
Director Pierce?
Aye.
Director Ragsdale?
Aye.
Director Schneider?
Aye.
Director Showalter?
Yes.
Director Stevenson?
Yes.
Director Stone?
Yes.
Director Vella?
Aye.
And Director Zichterman?
Yes.
All right, and as unanimous.
Okay. We'll turn the mics. Okay, our next item is number five, the SFPUC report, which will be given by Ms. Corvanova. This is on affordability efforts. There is yours.
Hi. Am I working? Yeah, thank you. Hi, everybody. So I'm Erin Corvanova. I'm the Financial Planning Director at San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and I'm here today to talk about affordability, and I've got a particular focus on the affordability policy that our agency adopted a few years ago, and how we're using that to look at affordability in our financial planning and budgeting. So I've linked it here in the slides that you should all have a copy of, but our affordability policy is available on our website. It's a commission-approved policy that was adopted in November of 2023. I'm very proud of this policy. We did a lot of looking at what other utilities are doing across California and the nation, and there's really no other utility that has an explicit policy like this that sets a target for affordability for use in financial planning. So we're testing it out, and we're very excited to see how it goes for us. The policy includes three pieces. It's a process, it's a metric for measuring affordability, and it's a target that we're aiming to hit, and I'll talk about each of those pieces on the next few slides. We've been using this for two years now to evaluate the affordability of our combined water and sewer bills. We do have a plan, because we are water power sewer, to revise our policy, to add targets for power that's actually coming up, but I'm focused on the piece that's around water, since that's most relevant to you, and it's what we've already got adopted. So there were a few key things that we decided to do when we were developing this policy. The first is a policy that sets performance metrics that is not integrated into your planning process will never be used. So it was really important that when we laid this out, that we were actually visualizing how we were going to use these performance metrics when making decisions. Otherwise, what's the point? So we're trying to minimize the effort. We don't want to have a bunch of extra reports off on the side, so it requires us to report things as part of our budgeting and rate setting, when we'd already be doing public presentations and talking to our commissioners. And we also really wanted to rely on simple-to-calculate metrics. Affordability is a really complex topic. You might want to look at lots of different demographics. You might want to look at, in your case, lots of different cities. You might want to look at, you know, looking at issues around racial equity. There is a lot of complexity in thinking about affordability, and it can make it a little overwhelming. So one of the things you have to do if you're setting a target and monitoring things is you have to simplify something to something that you can do in a repeatable, quick fashion to say, this is indicative of what we're doing as an agency. It was really important that we tailor our metrics and targets to our service area. If you look out there at what other utilities, other regulatory associations, think tanks, et cetera, use for measuring affordability, you'll often find things like a reference to. The EPA says that an affordable water bill should be no more than 2% of median household income, or something like that. In San Francisco, median household incomes are very high. 2% of that median bill says that an extremely high water bill is affordable. It just doesn't pass the sniff test. So it's really important, when you're setting your metrics and targets, that you look at your own customers, your own situation, and think about where your stresses are. We also really wanted to reflect the fact that we're aware that utilities are just one portion of the burden that our customers are facing here in the Bay Area. We know that housing costs, of course, are astronomical. Childcare, you know, nothing is cheap, and so if you start adding that all on top, your water bill may be, you know, just one thing, but it's one thing on top of everything else. And so we really wanted to make sure when we set our targets, that we were setting them low enough that we were accounting for the fact that people have many, many other expenses that they have to pay for. And finally, this was really tough to think about internally, and I'll talk about kind of the process, because everybody was very anxious that if you set a target and say, this is what we consider affordable, and we must stay under that, well, are we going to prevent ourselves from doing things that we must do, right? You know, we don't want to be disinvesting in our system. We don't want to say, oh, we can't meet our regulatory obligations because we can't afford to do these things. I work in finance. I think a lot about our obligations to our bondholders. We don't want to, you know, go back on meeting our debt service coverage targets and other important credit-worthy things that mean that we can get access to low-cost capital. That's not going to be good for your affordability in the long run. So we really had to think hard about how we would integrate this target into our planning. And the goal is that we always want to meet that target, but the policy was written very carefully in order to allow us to make trade-offs if needed, because fundamentally, budgeting and planning is about trade-offs. So this is tiny font on the slide. I'm very, very sorry, so I will read these all out loud to you. But the idea here is that this is a process. So starting at the very top box there, we have a operating budget and a 10-year financial plan that we develop every year. When we get that budget, we get the proposed budget, we look at what rate increases would be necessary in order to cover our expenses and comply with our financial policies. We then forecast our bills as a percent of two different household incomes, and I'll talk about those specific households. And then we say, are those bills under or over the target over a 20-year planning horizon? So it's another key thing. 20 years is a very long time to be forecasting. There's obviously a lot of uncertainty about what the state of things will be in 15 years, but we know that a lot of the financial decisions we're making today don't really start to show up and hit customers. These are big projects that take a long time. The debt that we issue takes a long time to actually get down to the bills, so you have to look pretty far out, or you're really not seeing the impact of your capital plan. If we're over the targets, the policy says that we have to provide a justification for why we're over the targets, and we have to come up with strategies for what we are going to do as an agency to bring us down in that 20-year period. And then, after we provide that to our commission as part of our budgeting process, we're going to pursue those strategies. How are we going to bring our bills down? What choices are we going to make as an agency to prevent that from happening, hopefully? So the idea here is that this is an early warning. We're looking way out in the future, 20 years in the future, and saying, do we think we might have affordability problems? And if so, we have to take actions now to try and prevent that. So I go through here our specific affordability metrics and targets that we ended up adopting. I don't want to go into too much detail for these, because I think fundamentally, this is very, very specific to your service area. I gave a version of this presentation to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, very similar to you guys, very large agency, lots of different cities and utilities that make it up, and a lot of different economic situations, a lot of different concerns, priorities. And I think you guys are going to have a very interesting job thinking about how you will balance affordability and think about that for your customers when such a big diverse service area. The ones we came up with were chosen specifically to think about two representative households for San Francisco that we have, want to keep an eye on. One is what we're calling the typical household, so we said, we want to think about an average San Francisco household. We think that's really important, to think about, what does this bill mean for the average San Franciscan? We happen to pick for this typical household metric, a 40th percentile. If you're not a finance person, that's essentially the median. If you lined every household up in San Francisco in a line, the median is the person right at the 50th. The 40th percentile is the household right there at 40. So 40% of San Francisco households have incomes lower than the 40th percentile. We chose that one slightly under the median to address the fact that median households in San Francisco are extremely high compared to the rest of the country, and so picking something slightly lower meant that we're accounting for our cost of living. It also accounted for, if you look at, you know, demographics, we were trying to make sure that we weren't picking a household that ignored racial equity concerns, which is a big priority for our agency. For that household, we are targeting that their combined water and sewer bill be less than 3% of their annual income. We also made a target for a low-income household. We know that low-income households are obviously the ones bearing the greater burden of paying for their utilities. It's a bigger deal for them. They're facing more challenges, again, globally, and so for them, we have a target that their combined water and sewer bill must be less than 7% of their household income. The metric itself is pretty simple. It's your average residential bill divided by that income equals that percent. So I wanted to pause for a moment and talk about how I think that this policy does or does not apply to you as our wholesale customers. Our metrics, these metrics in the policy, are focused on retail residential customers. In some sense, that's because it's the only group that's easy to say what is affordable. You know, what is affordable for a commercial customer? What is an average commercial customer bill? What is an average income for a commercial customer? You can't really answer that. There's so much diversity within them. So pretty much no one has figured out a good metric to use to measure anything other than residential customer affordability. So it's sort of by necessity that this is where we landed. Now, I'll say that wholesale customers are part of the policy. Because of legal restrictions, you know, because of Prop 218, because of the water supply agreement and the way we allocate costs, the main way that we would keep our retail rates lower is by keeping our costs down. And usually, when we keep our costs down, we keep our costs down for everybody. So decisions we make that are meant to achieve retail customer affordability almost always are going to come back and have an impact on our wholesale customer rates. That said, the wholesale customers are not a perfect fit for the policy. It's not perfectly one-to-one when we keep costs down. You could imagine, for example, that if we were over our policy target and we wanted to bring costs down, we could say, we're cutting only main replacement in San Francisco. We're not going to do any main replacement anymore, and that would bring our costs down. It would help our retail side of the bill. It would have no impact on the wholesale rate. So it's not perfect. The other thing I'll point out is that we do have a metric that's based on the combined water and sewer bill. We made that decision because for our customers, they get it on one bill. They have no idea how much their bill is for water or sewer. For them, it's one thing, and so that's what made sense for us. Obviously, that does mean that if our wastewater rate increases are very high, that's going to have pressure on us to make decisions that could impact the water side of our planning. So I call those out because I think they're important to keep in mind, and it was something we really grappled with as an agency as we went through this. I also want to say that despite those caveats, when we're actually making financial decision-making and budgeting, we are always thinking about our wholesale customers. I can guarantee you that not a meeting goes by when we're looking at our 10-year CIP that somebody says, ah, like, don't worry about Basca. Don't worry about how this would impact the regional water system. Let's set that aside. That's never a thing. We are obligated by the WSA to care about this, you know, beyond our professional interest in doing the right thing. Moreover, we're required to share information with you. There were modifications made, amendments to the WSA just a few years ago, that really increased the information that is provided as part of our budget process to Basca and allows for specific comments on our capital planning. So we fully expect to be engaged as we go through our budget process this year it's coming up. So this slide here is showing the latest results of our affordability policy. We adopt a 10-year rolling capital improvement and financial plan, so this is from February. We'll be back again in February of 2026. You can see from the graph on the right, just there at the end, that the green and blue combined bill, so the green is the wastewater and the blue is the water, is right over those two lines. So that line is the target we're aiming to stay under, and we are just going over it. As you can see by this chart, the main driver is our wastewater rate increases. I won't go into it, but we're facing a lot of regulatory requirements. I'm sure many of you are familiar with a lot of these issues, because I don't think San Francisco is the only one dealing with them. But we're trying to figure out what we're going to do about this. So we adopted our policy. The second year that we went to our commission, we said, well, we're showing that we're going to be over the target that we set. So this was a tough conversation, right? But that is the point of the policy, is to say, looks like we're forecasted to exceed these limits. What are we going to do about it? And so we had discussion with the public. We had discussion with our commissioners. We've had a lot of discussion internally with our management. How can we make decisions now that will prevent us from being there in 15 years? If we weren't looking this far out, we might not know about this problem, and, you know, ignorance is bliss, but we have a responsibility for our customers to really think about the impacts of the decisions we're making today. So what are we doing? Right now, internally, we are beginning our budget process. We adopt a biannual operating budget, so we're in the second year of the budget right now. So we're going to be working on that two-year budget. We're going to be working on our 10-year CIP. Been working with our budget director on the instructions that are going out to our enterprises, and what we're beginning with as a target is that we are aiming to make decisions in our budgets that will bring those bills down below the target. How does that happen? You know, where do those cuts come from? I work in finance. I am not the expert on what those decision-making choices should be, right? So that's where the engineers, that's where the operators, that's where the people in our water and wastewater enterprises, who are the true experts in weighing those trade-offs, come in. From my perspective, as people in finance, our role is to set a border and then to tell the experts, try to stay within that border. Tell us what you think is the best way to get there, and we'll see what we can do. I'll also note that the SFPUC has ongoing a really massive project. We're calling it the Capital Planning Improvement Initiative. It's a multi-year process to really improve our deliverability of our projects, so if we budget for something, making sure we can actually spend the money in a timely fashion and get those projects done. So that's part of this overall process. This is a non-binding guideline, so if at the end of this whole process, we get to the point, and everybody says, we really tried, but the regulatory requirements have to be met, we cannot skimp on our R and R, there's just no way, we can approve a CIP, we can adopt rates that exceed that policy, but we're making every effort possible to try not to do that. And that is the last slide I have, and I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chair. That was a really good presentation about a really good policy, and I just want to commend you for doing that. Secondly, could you give this to PGV? I think this would be great.
Okay, Director Montano.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. So if you can help me understand, I know you, it's a San Francisco water power sewer, and I know that, you know, the Hetch Hetchy belongs to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, but why did you use the San Francisco, the city of San Francisco as the model and not all the cities that benefit, that are, you know, paying the San Francisco Public Utilities for water?
Yeah, it's a great question. We talked about trying to calculate an average water and sewer bill for our entire service area. It does get challenging, because the overlap between, you know, the sewer and the water provider isn't always one-to-one, so you end up in a situation where people might be getting their water from one city, but their sewer from a different district, right? It's also challenging, because when we are setting our capital plan and passing things on, we're only controlling the supply portion of the bill. What the actual customer is paying does include, you know, the in-city distribution, all of the overhead, all of the administration programs that your cities may run, and so we don't actually control the retail rates of our wholesale customers. Kind of from a philosophical perspective, our thought was that a good performance metric is measuring something that our agency has control over, because otherwise, we might say, oh, we want to stay under this target for our whole service area, but then one, you know, city might make a choice. We need to really reinvest in our local distribution system. We nearly need to raise rates in order to afford that. It puts us over the target. That's their choice, right? But we wouldn't want to say, oh, we failed now, because one of our customers has decided to do that.
Yeah, it's just that, because San Francisco, the median income is really high, so it's comparing to the cities, and it's not the same. And also, you know, you have a lot of people there, so I'm just wondering, why, is it comparable? Doesn't seem like it's comparable, so.
I don't, what city are you from? Can I ask?
The city of Melpitas.
From Melpitas, okay.
So we get two water sources, and that's valley water and Hetch Hetchy, so.
Yeah. So there's a lot of variation, right, in our service area? There are cities that are much lower income and much higher income. San Francisco is not the highest-income city in the entire regional water system, and that is also part of the reason that when we picked our targets, we picked lower household incomes. So I think, I'm not going to get the exact number off the top of my head, but that 20th percentile income in San Francisco, I want to say is something like $40,000, $45,000 annually. So that target, we are looking at a pretty low-income household, and we were trying to do that to focus again on something that was representative for the people who are most burdened.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Director Ragsdale?
That was really informative and fantastic presentation, and so great. Affordability is on the top of mind for all of the customers, and that's super helpful to know what you guys are doing. I just had one question. You mentioned the Capital Planning Improvement Initiative. Is that something that Basca is also welcome to comment on, and not just the CIP itself?
I'm nodding over it. Allison or Steve to give more information on it, because it's actually a different team that's managing that, so I'm not as familiar of its current status and what Basca has or has not been involved in. I don't know if you want to chime in there.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting I have any problems or issues with it, just curious.
Yeah, I think my two cents about most of the project is about improving our internal processes, so getting our project managers, getting the contracting faster, getting our data management faster, finance coordinating better with infrastructure with the division so that projects are delivered on time, finding efficiencies. It's trying to get rid of the bureaucracy that we find often plagues us, is a lot of the work. So some of it is unfortunately in the weeds for San Francisco's own issues, but obviously...
Good answer.
Okay.
Yeah, no, very, very good answer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Director Schneider?
Oh, I was one of the last ones.
faster, finance coordinating better with infrastructure with the divisions so that projects are delivered on time, finding efficiencies. It's trying to get rid of the bureaucracy that we find often plagues us is a lot of the work. So some of it is unfortunately in the weeds for San Francisco's own issues, but obviously...
Good answer.
Okay.
Yeah, no, very, very good answer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Director Schneider.
I was one of the last ones.
Okay.
No, you were. Otherwise.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ann.
Just for the staff who don't know me, Ann Schneider-Milbury. And some of you have heard me say this before, but SFPUC is our largest landowner in Milbury. They were, up until recently, our largest employer in Milbury. What that means, with the exception of two, three commercial operations, they pay no property tax, they pay nothing else. You do pay the fire assessment, and you do pay the county stormwater fee, because I've been looking into that. With the capital improvement plan, what you, what we get to see but we don't get to say yes or no to has a big impact on my city alone and our ability to subsidize any of our ratepayers on that. And part of the capital improvement plan in the existing 10-year plan, I don't know if you're talking about the future 10-year plan, is going to hurt us badly on that. And please correct me, but it is my understanding that as Basque members, we get to look at the capital improvement plan, but we don't get to say yes or no. It simply is going to be what it is. And I think, in the name of friendship and being our largest landowner, there are ways to look at the existing 10-year plan and not make Milbury pay such a heavy hit for improvements that could easily be done up at Harry Tracy Plant on that. So I see what you're trying to do. We just separated our water and sewer bills, although we divide every component out. I'll go back and do this, and that might be an interesting task for all of us Basque members, is to use a similar formula in C on that. But again, we all come from cities with different average property sizes, lot sizes, how much is hardscaped, et cetera. It's really hard to do apples and apples. But again, my city is not happy that we are going to pay a big impact of the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stone, followed by Director Andrews. Director Stone.
My ratepayers, I'm sorry. My ratepayers, not my city, my ratepayers.
That's the city.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the presentation. Really helped kind of understand better how you developed your own affordability policy. I think that's going to be beneficial for all of our agencies as well, to see if that's something that we want to do in our own individual cities. My one question was regarding the increases in the average water bills. Are you able to clarify how much of those increases are attributable to in-city water costs versus regional water system expenditures that our own agencies are helping fund?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this is the retail water bill, so it's, at the end of the day, it'd only be the portion that San Francisco customers pay of the regional water system. So anything obviously paid for by you guys is excluded from this rate. I don't know off the top of my head, for our customers, what percentage of their bill goes to just in-city costs versus the regional water system. We could look that up, but I don't know off the top of my head.
If you could follow up on that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, Director Stone, we do get that information from San Francisco, a projection and a history of what the wholesale rate change has been. So we can pass that on.
Yes, I was actually going to ask the same question as Director Ragsdale, to see if
we can have that planned. Now, if you don't want to give trade secrets, I understand, but can you share lessons learned from doing the plan to the agencies? Because I think it would be beneficial.
I don't believe in trade secrets. We're a public agency, and everything is public. I think I would just go back here because I think this slide was really, in a way, speaking to some of those. So I think some of the things that were challenging for us was we wanted to point to industry standards. No one ever wants to have to make something up, and so everybody said, "Well, what is the industry doing? What is the norm?" And because most utilities don't have policies like this, there wasn't a norm. And so we had to pick. We had to make a sort of judgment call. What is an appropriate percent of income for someone to pay to their utility bill? And there's no right answer to that. It's just, you know, what do we think makes sense for us? What do we think, we could tell our ratepayers with a straight face, like, "We think this is affordable," and they wouldn't say, "That's ridiculous." So that was a challenge, and I think, you know, just getting comfortable with having to make that there's-no-right-answer decision and commit to a target was one of the, you know, big lessons learned through this. And then I think that last one about a hard limit, right? So it's not a hard limit, and that was a big thing, is how do we talk about this as we really want to meet it, but if there's a circumstance in which we're being required to do some big project to meet regulatory requirements, we're not going to tell our regulators, "Sorry, we've got an affordability policy. We can't," you know? Well, we might try to tell them that, but they're probably not going to buy it, and we're going to, you know, meet our requirements anyway. So really being careful and working, I'll tell you, with our lawyers in great detail about the language, about what this policy requires, and socializing that through our commissioners, through our executive team, is a big part of our decision-making.
So is there any way you can capture your affordability policy to feed into advocacy to the state representatives so they understand when they have these regulations? We do have a policy here that we're trying to meet affordability, but if you're making these requirements and you don't have funding behind them, then you are impacting your, the ratepayers, which is also your constituents as well.
Yes, that is absolutely one of our big goals. I will say that our regulatory affairs team, who does work with those folks, is pulling this out every chance they get and saying, "Look at this projection. We are currently showing we're not going to be affordable. If you start adding more and more on top of what we're already having to do, it's going to be a huge challenge." So that's a big part of our messaging around this. Okay, thanks.
Director Kiesel, followed by Director Monalo.
Yes.
Kiesel first.
Great job on the modeling. I've done modeling in the past. Is it possible, let me tell you, give a little bit more here. The wastewater has got seemed like a bubble in your chart. Oh, it's not there anymore. On your numbers chart and not the graph chart. And so that, it tells me one thing, and then I look at the bar chart on the right side, that wastewater is increasing much larger than water usage itself. Is there any way to get hold or view, or is it in this presentation, what the assumptions are and what the variables are that you're working with?
Yeah, so we've got, because this is part of our 10-year financial plan that we adopt every year, there's a whole 10-year financial plan report that has a section on this policy that goes into all the details. And so we do publish that. So I can say, the driver of the wastewater rate increases is also a big deal. We talked about it a lot in our budget. It's a lot around the, a few big projects, especially the nutrient removal related to algae blooms in the bay is a big, big portion of that. We've also got some pretty significant, one of our major outfalls in the city into the bay is going to be quite expensive, and it's already passed its useful life. So it's a couple of really big projects, combined with a number of flooding-related projects, again, related to regulatory obligations and some settlements, that is really driving that wastewater capital plan. So that's the cause, and that's where, I'll just be honest, that's where a lot of the work is going right now, right? Because since that's what's driving the increases, that's what we have to tackle.
I can see that, yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Monalo, followed by Director Scholwalt.
Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, you said the policy was, you know, passed in November or in 2023. And so where you're at, at the current phase of implementation, is it hasn't actually, it's not finished, or has it been?
So we do, so, yeah, we adopt our budget January, February of every year, so we've had two budget cycles that have been in place. So this graph right here is from the most recent budget adoption.
Okay. And then how often, so on an annual basis, you look at kind of what the changes are, the area median income?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is wonderful, I think, for your, obviously, consumers to have this in place. I think for our jurisdictions, it would be great to see kind of the analysis for us. You know, one thing that we do in the city of Daly City is when we do have an increase in whatever utilities, we do have a utility program that helps very low-income community members. And so knowing that whenever we do an increase, those that are, you know, most disenfranchised will have an issue. And so we kind of created that program, I would say, probably a couple of years ago, and have instituted it with other, you know, across our utilities. So I wanted to share that with my colleagues here, that we have that program. If someone, you know, is interested, we're happy to share on how the city of Daly City did it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, I didn't talk here about any customer assistance programs. I think that's a key portion of this, right? So this is the average bill, but if you've got discount programs that can help your most burdened customers bring that down, that's a crucial part of our toolkit. Just with Prop 218, it's obviously limited for a lot of utilities what they're actually able to do.
Okay, thank you. Director Scholwalt, followed by Director Stevenson.
Thank you for this presentation. It was very interesting. When I look at that chart that's 20 years out, one of the things I think about is that there's so much variability in what contributes to those costs so that, and that variability is kind of magnified as you get further out. So it seems like you don't really, by looking at that chart and seeing how it's just, you know, just a hair over the affordability line, you don't really know that it's more affordable, you know, more or less affordable. It could be 10% over, 20% over, it could be 10% lower. I mean, but from a, so how do you take into account changes in interest rates and changes in construction costs? I mean, in the last, in the last five years, materials for construction have gone up over 50%. So it just seems like there's, this is really good for an exercise, but in terms of it actually saying, "This is how much we'll have to take out of the program to meet our, you know, to meet our needs in 20 years," it seems like that's kind of premature. How do you deal with all that uncertainty?
That is, so as a person who works in financial planning, I am confident that this will not be what actually happens in 20 years. There's no way. We can't know, yeah. So we do our best, is the short answer, and we know that there's a lot of uncertainty. So I mentioned that this is part of a big financial plan report that our team publishes every year. So we do go through and talk about, you know, some of the big changes every year. One of the big things, for example, was around interest rates. We finance a lot of our capital plan through revenue bonds, and the interest rates have been much higher than we have been expecting lately. And so in one of our recent updates, we significantly increased our interest rate assumptions on our debt to account for that, and that immediately made everything look more expensive. So we try every year to incorporate the latest and best data that we have available to us, and we write out, you know, here's what we are putting in, and here's what changed. We've also been trying to increase our use of sensitivities, so looking at things like, "Okay, this is one scenario. What about a scenario where, you know, there was a lot of worry that we might lose the ability to do tax-exempt debt financing, which would have really, really put things through the roof? How much would that have made things worse?" So we're trying to, when we know that there's a particular area of uncertainty, run scenarios that say, "Well, how much worse would it look, or how much better would it look in this case?" But you are very correct that you're always going to have to be making decisions without having perfect future knowledge, and that's just sort of, I think, the challenge we have to live in as financial professionals.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Stevenson, followed by Director Pierce.
Thank you. Yeah, excellent presentation. I like the aspirational part of it, which is the affordability and how we effectively communicate that or plan around that. I would echo Director Scholwalt's, and I think also Director Stone brought up some of this as well, is what are the assumptions? Because, you know, most of CIP is debt-financed. We don't know what the slate of CIP is going to be 10 years out, 20 years out. Things come up. There's also the legislative process, which puts additional restrictions or requirements, particularly around affluent flows. And so I think the exercise is very useful from a modeling and analysis, but over a shorter range of decision-making. Because I don't think you can plan to this. And I also noticed that the assumptions in years, the out-years is substantially trending down in terms of rate increases, but our experience is quite the opposite in the last five to 10 years. So I like the aspirational part. It would be great to share the assumptions, how you modeled this. I like the idea of the affordability and how each city and each participating wholesale entity can embrace some of this. But I get very worried. I tell our own council, "Hey, we got a seven-year forward kind of looking picture," and even there, substantial arguments about what we should be assuming. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pierce.
Well, like all forecasting and all assumptions, a lot of it, it's a very good exercise. It enables us to plan. I think if nothing else, it indicates that you have a desire to work on affordability, and I think that's useful, and I think it's useful for all of our agencies to look internally because the cost of water is only one piece of what our customers get charged. So I think the fact that you are doing your part to address that is very useful and very thoughtful. And then it leaves us on the other end of needing to do that for our agencies as well, realizing that we are 2/3 of the cost and 2/3 of the infrastructure. So thank you very much. Very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Director Bell.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Korbinova. Very good. I am very curious what kind of thought process you go to when you pursue strategies not to increase rates in the future. And that comment that you passed about the wholesale customers in Basque, did you just say that because you were here? Just kidding.
So I think the, there's like the low-hanging fruit, right? Can we get grants? Could we get perhaps WIFIA or SRF loans that are at lower interest rates, right? That allows you to do the same amount of capital at a lower cost, so that's always great. One of the other big things we've been looking at is thinking a lot about the balance between our debt and pay-as-you-go financing. So we have typically been a very heavy debt-financed utility because interest rates were low, we could afford to do it. But as things start looking shakier and shakier around the financial markets, we start to think, "Hmm, maybe we want to shift that balance." That means you have to pay more upfront, but then you don't have that interest cost. It is, in the long run, going to be a cheaper option. And so that's one of the big things we're looking at, is thinking about financing. That's sort of the finance side, but then there's obviously the, what are we actually delivering on side? So that's where our budget team, our infrastructure, our enterprises are really thinking about, taking a hard look at those capital projects and saying, "Is there anything here that could be delayed? Is there anything here that could be value-engineered? Is there anything here that could be completely taken out because it was a nice-to-have and we don't need to do it?" And so that's where I'm not the expert, because they're the ones who are making those decisions, but I know they're doing a lot of that work right now.
It increases, and it's great to have, but I was kind of curious how, you know, what goes into the thought process, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Tom Weed.
Okay.
Tom Weed.
Okay, John Weed.
John, John Weed.
Yes, we do. That was obviously a big problem in the pandemic. I'm sure many of you experienced people really falling behind on their bills, especially because we stopped doing water shut-offs, and so then they build up these huge balances. We tend to have, well, I guess I'll just say this. One of the things in our policy is looking at typical customers. The typical customer is going to pay their bill. They're not going to be delinquent. They don't want their water shut off. That doesn't mean it's not a hardship for them. So we definitely monitor delinquencies, and it's been a thing that was a problem in recent years, although it's getting much, much better now. But we also want to think about the people who are making their bill payments in a timely fashion, because that doesn't necessarily mean that it's not a challenge for them.
Okay. Thank you. Director Stevenson, is your thing down?
Yeah, John? There you go. Thank you.
Director, CEO Smigl, do you want to make a call?
Oh, I just wanted to introduce SFPUC Commissioner Harsey is here with us as well.
Oh, I just wanted to introduce SFPC Commissioner Arce is here with us as well. So Erin is giving her presentation to our board and her bosses, so. And I've heard her give a version of this at the SFPC. So thank you very much for your presentation.
And I would just say, good luck. My other big takeaway is this was, this was hard. These are tough decisions, and it really matters to the people that we serve. And I know you guys are grappling with this, so good luck.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any public comments on this presentation, either from in here?
Yeah.
And while he's running up here, Director Shaw Walter, do you have any public at your location?
Okay, so I just wanted to say, thank you.
I do not, it's only me.
Okay, I won't ask you for public comment anymore.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Korvenova. And I would just add, particularly because Commissioner Arce is here, she's an example of some of the depth of talent that the SFPC has. And I'm not saying the SFPC doesn't have issues, but I've come over and over again, as I dig into issues with other people within the organization, they have the level of expertise and talent that we've seen from Ms. Korvenova. So we still need to do our oversight, but she's an example of the outstanding resources we have at our disposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is Water Management Rep Report by Elizabeth Feigl from City of Mountain View.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Feigl. I'm the Water Resources Manager from the City of Mountain View. And I want to thank Tom for the invitation to come and represent the Water Management Representatives here tonight. You know, one of the things I love about working with the WMR is how we all get a little window into each of our individual agencies. You know, we share a lot in common, but we all have our unique situations and our unique challenges. And what I hope to do tonight is to give you a little window into Mountain View's situation, in particular, and how it relates to this Water Supply Reliability Contract Actions, this package that has been moving through all of our governing bodies one by one. So I'm going to start by talking a bit about who we serve. Most of Mountain View Water goes to serve residential users. Those are the two blue pieces of pie on the right. Actually, our single largest customer category is multifamily. About 60% of our dwelling units are multifamily homes. And that is expected to increase in the future. Our RENA numbers and our planning, approved planning documents allow for an increase in approximately 75% in our population. So we expect most, if not all of that, to be accommodated in that multifamily sector. We do also have a robust commercial sector, and we serve the water to those businesses that provide approximately 100,000 jobs in Mountain View. So this chart shows the city's water production or water use by our supply sources over the past 50 years. You know, 100 years ago or so, we were a groundwater agency before San Francisco's regional water system was completed. And you can see the blue bar is our San Francisco water production, and it has made up the majority of our water supply for quite a long time now. The trend here that you see, we see in Mountain View or have seen in Mountain View, I think is very similar to the trends that all of our agency have seen in the last 50 years, which started with a real uptick in water demand in the 70s and 80s as the population grew, and an expectation that that population growth would continue to increase our water demand. And so in the mid 80s, Mountain View was exceeding our water supply guarantee from San Francisco. And we were forced to go outside to look elsewhere for additional water supplies. And that's when we really looked to bring online a connection to Valley Water, and then also increase recycled water and a new distribution system there. You know, the overall trend here, I think, mirrors probably most, if not all, of the trends in your water demand in your agencies, which is sort of this really jagged up-and-down trend of use with a downward slope over 50 years. And a lot of that is driven by drought. You know, drought is not new in California. But what is kind of new in the last 15 years is the severity and the frequency of that drought. And I think, you know, we're all have been very proud of how our customers responded to the call for conservation, particularly during droughts. And the reason I give you this background and how it relates to the water supply contract actions, you know, this package really puts together a lot of different solutions to a lot of different problems. And Mountain View's little piece of that problem really pertains to just one section of the water supply agreement, and that pertains to the minimum purchase requirement. You know, we are one of the four agencies that is subject to a minimum purchase requirement, which was established in the 1980s and designed, it was designed to prevent source shifting to the secondary imported water supply. And I focus on the word imported because a lot of our agencies have secondary supplies, but only four of us have secondary imported supplies. So the minimum purchase, which was the red line here, shows the value that was reset in the 2009 contract. And you can see that really the overlap between that minimum purchase and the back, the back-to-back droughts that we've experienced in 15 years has caused Mountain View to be below its minimum purchase in almost every year in the last 15 years. And in fact, in the recent decade, you can see that the combined total usage from all four of our water supplies is below just the San Francisco minimum. So while we're all happy and supportive of this conservation, the intersection of these two events has really put Mountain View in a pickle. And it has resulted in us being charged $15 million for water that our customers simply couldn't use because of the toggling on and off of drought requests, conservation mandates, and then the very next year being required to purchase a certain amount. So this amendment that is part of the package, one of the components, and there are a lot of components included in it, but one that we are particularly happy and grateful for and excited about is this reset, which uses the same methodology that was established in the 80s to reset Mountain View's minimum purchase requirement. And you can see the new line would be below our San Francisco purchases. And the goal of that really is to reinstate the original intent, which is to prevent source shifting to a secondary imported supply, but to remove this unanticipated consequence that has really happened where we have been charged for water our customers can't use. And in doing so, you know, it really rebalances the economic incentives, particularly for the development of local water supplies. You know, the contract, in addition to the minimum purchase requirement, also has a requirement for all of the agencies to look at local supplies because it recognizes the benefit of local groundwater, local recycled water, surface water, conservation, you know, all of these things that we individually invest in. There's a recognition that the entire region benefits from those investments. So what I'm going to do here is shift to give you a little insight on some of the projects that we have been working on here in Mountain View. I'll focus on three in particular. So the first one that we're moving forward with is a new recycled water tank. And this is a project, we just completed a siting study earlier this year. And June was a big month for water in Mountain View because not only did we adopt the package, our city council also allocated funding and resources to each of these three projects that I'm going to go forward, explain a little bit more detail. They have allocated funding for the design, which we are now underway. If you're squinting and looking for the tank in the rendering, you won't see it because it's buried. But I felt like it was important to show kind of a before and after, anyway. So this is a 2 million gallon buried tank. It will be at a location called Charleston Park, which is in our North Bay Shore area. So if you're driving down 101, the area to your left when you pass Mountain View, that's our North Bay Shore area. And it includes all of the, most of the large campuses, tech campuses, shoreline golf, shoreline regional park. And that is our current recycled water service area. So what this tank will do is it'll take the, we have about 3 million gallons a day of pumping capacity coming out of Palo Alto into Mountain View. And it'll allow us to increase those peak demand needs. So it'll increase our peak flows so we can max, better maximize the use of that water coming to Mountain View out of Palo Alto. And that project, as it proceeds, is, if it remains on schedule, may begin construction in 2028. So the second project I'm going to talk about is also a recycled water project. Our, I don't recall if I said this earlier, we are partners in the Regional Water Quality Control Plant in Palo Alto. And so this is a joint facility. The City of Palo Alto is the owner-operator of that facility. And we have been working for at least five years on this project with them. And we are very happy that just last month, in June, both of our city councils approved a funding mechanism to proceed with construction of this advanced water purification system. It'll be a microfiltration and reverse osmosis system with the goal of improving the recycled water quality. And what that does is it really widens our ability to use it for more purposes. This project actually, construction kicked off just a couple of weeks ago, and this should be completed by mid 2028. And then the last project I want to talk about, again, received additional funding just in June. We moved forward with a consulting contract to help the city design and procure an advanced metering system, a smart water system. I know a lot of you have or are investigating or working on, looking into these systems. You know, they offer a lot of operational benefits by reducing truck rolls because you can remotely collect the billing reads. But they also have very significant water conservation implications. They help with early leak detection so that customers are aware if they have a water leak. We currently read our customer meters every two months. So this would be, this will be a very big improvement on that. And then it includes an educational component, so people just know how they're using their water. And that's kind of the first step in improving efficiencies. So that is what I have today, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, and congratulations on all these great projects going on in Mountain View. I had a question about, looking at the historical, the historical usage of water, I see your groundwater tailed off and stopped. Was that a, was that a policy change? Was that a change in your aquifer? Why, around the turn of the century, did Mountain View stop using groundwater in there?
Are you referring in the, kind of the middle of this graph area or closer to the?
Well, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at the groundwater bar, the gray bar kind of disappears around the turn of the century.
Well, as I said, okay, so our groundwater actually feeds directly into our San Francisco pressure zones. So that is one component in that the use of groundwater one-to-one offsets San Francisco use, which we are, in many years, paying for that we couldn't use. So that is one component. I'd say that might be the largest component.
Okay, I'm curious.
I might have to get back to you if there are more. I'm not in charge of operations.
No worries. We use a lot of groundwater in San Bruno, so, you know, just looking at, you know, what could possibly happen to us, or, you know, thinking about it that way.
I can say, it's not an aquifer problem. We do maintain our wells, we still have our wells, and we do have the, continue to have availability in the aquifer, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. City of Burlingame is looking at a lot of these same things. I'm curious about the funding strategy. I know you've had some recent council approvals. Some of that might be early design, which is maybe more done within the general fund of the city. But just curious if you can comment on your overall funding strategy for some of these, particularly the recycled, the increased, reversed osmosis plant.
Yeah, the advanced water purification system in Palo Alto ended up being quite a bit more expensive than we expected. And it is, has a combination of multiple funding sources. We were able to secure jointly with Palo Alto some external funding from Valley Water, as well as a grant that Palo Alto applied for from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. So those two external sources make up about half of the construction cost. The remainder is funded by water fund revenues, fee revenues, and taxes mostly.
Okay, thank you. Director Shaw Walter, followed by Director Schneider.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Feigl, for this presentation. Every time I listen to you talk, I learn more about our system, and this was no exception. But one of the things I wanted to bring up was our processing of our recycled water. It isn't common practice for this to be called desalination because formally, desalination is treatment of saltwater. But in fact, what we are doing is using the processes that are used in desalination plants to take salt out of our wastewater. And I want to bring that to everyone's attention because when we look at around the Bay Area, at improving our local water supply, we have wastewater that we can treat and make very good recycled water. And we can use these desalination processes that have been around for a long time. We know how to do them. And because the salt content of our wastewater is much, much lower than the salt content of the bay water or seawater, the power requirements, and consequently, the cost of doing that is much less. So I just want to share with you that these are processes that have, you know, that have been used a long time. And if you want to see a plant operating right now that's using most of these processes, you could, we could, you can go and visit the Santa Clara Valley Water District Advanced Purification Plant that's at a San Jose plant. They run regular tours and are all set up to show it to people. So I just wanted to share that concept that when we think about desalinating or cleaning up water sources we have, we never want to overlook our wastewater supply. It's just really valid and really valuable. So thanks, Elizabeth, for all this great information.
Okay, well, thank you. Director Schneider, followed by Director Monelo.
Thank you, thank you. And always love to hear how Mountain View is doing, to let you know I am a homeowner down there. And Director Shaw Walter and I are former classmates. There was a time when Stevens Creek was flooding, and there was, I was part of a group that looked at stormwater retention. It was going to be at Questa Park, so everybody hated that idea. Have you guys gone any farther on stormwater retention? Especially when it was linked with the flooding of the affordable housing on the other side of 101?
Well, Director Shaw Walter might know a little more about this, but I believe that the construction of the McKelvey Park Retention Basin was, is related to what you're referring to. So Santa Clara Valley Water District is the kind of flood responsible agency in our county. And so we partnered with them on that retention basin that I know provides.
Very cool.
Yeah.
For everybody, and I know I'm going to harp on poor SFPUC. My townhome was built in the 80s, and it was considered high-density. So we had to actually lease land from SFPUC. actually lease land from SFPUC. The Hetch-Echey pipe runs right along California Drive, and we pay a fortune for the property tax, the leasing, and then we can only plant grass on it. So our dues are four fifty, 550 a month mainly because of that. It's a way that we might be able to recruit some money if you have Hetch-Echey running through your cities. I've been trying for years to get us out of it, but it, it does exist.
Okay, thank you. Director Manalo.
Thank you. You mentioned some technology that you were going to upgrade to in your slide, and I was wondering some specificity on that, where you said some of your residents would be able to detect leaks? Is it new, like very new technology? If you could elaborate a little bit.
Yeah, you know, the water industry is a little bit behind gas and electric on this. Several water agencies have implemented it and more are looking at it. It's more common in gas and electric because they use time of use rates. But what it is, it includes the installation of a fixed network or a partnership with a fixed network, like a cell network, and then installation of radio endpoints on each individual water meter that communicate remotely with this network so that you can, we can read the meters every hour from the computer. And so that provides billing efficiencies, but what we also do with that data is we monitor it, or we will monitor it, other agencies are doing it already. We will monitor it so that we can notice if there is water use every hour for a prolonged period of time at a home. That's unusual. Usually that's unintended water use, and it can be an indicator of a potential leak. So these are typically referred to as advanced metering infrastructure systems. I call them smart water meters more colloquially, but these are, there are several different types of systems out there, and that's one of the things we're going to be looking at is what's the best way to design a system and which company offers the best solution to fit Mountain View's needs.
Thank you, very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you for having me.
Any public comment on this presentation? Seeing none. Our next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. I do have one speaker card from.
Okay. My turn?
You're up.
Okay. Dave Warner, thank you. Hopefully you've either have or about to receive this one sheet, and here's, it goes with my presentation. Most of you have heard me talk about our high water rates and how future water rates will likely be higher than projections. Here's a current example, highlighted on the sheet you have. Today, we're in fiscal year 2026, which started July 1st. We're paying $2,526 per acre foot. Looking back at May, May 2022, wholesale water rates were, the wholesale, looking back at the May 2022 wholesale water rate presentation at the SFPUC three years ago, it projected this year's water rates would be $2,287. In other words, in May of 2022, we thought this year's water rate would be lower than it is today. But it's turned out that this year's water rate is $240 higher, or 10.5% higher than what was projected May of 2022. This is what the box in the top of that sheet is showing. It leads to the question of, will rates three years from now, fiscal 2029, be higher than the SFPUC's current projections for that year? Probably. We have something to do with this year's rates coming in higher than projected. You can see this at the bottom of my sheet. Projected Bosca Regional Water System demand for this year declined from 131 MGD that was projected in 2022 to 126 MGD projected now. Because the regional water system is pretty much a fixed cost system, when demand is lower than planned, the price has to go up. The decline in projected demand for this year only explains about a third of the underestimate of this year's price, but still, it's a third of the problem. So the point is, if you overestimate projected demand, you are contributing to underestimating the projected price of water. My part, my points are, in summary, one, that there's a significant and likely upside risk to projected water rates, and two, that overestimating demand contributes to under mis, underestimating future water rates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this is Commissioner Arce from the San Francisco PUC. You're the chair.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. My name's Josh Arce. I'm the vice president of the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and I came out to support our team, Aaron here with, of course, the, the guru, our, our assistant general manager, Steve Ritchie, and Allison Castama, to be here and, and listen on that previous item. I'm the commission's ratepayer advocate, is the designation of my seat. And the reason I got up for this item, which is stuff not on the agenda, is something that's not on the agenda, which is me saying thank you on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission, thanking Bosca for everything you do, and all of you working so hard, you know, as a ratepayer advocate, it's appropriate and I think proper to pay respects to the organization who represents two-thirds of our ratepayers, and because knowing the history that led to Bosca's formation from my good friend Gina Pappin, that I think there's not enough that we can do. There's never too much coming to say thank you for everything that you do. So you have a great representative. When Tom gets up there at the commission, he's fully briefing us, and we see the work that he does directly. He's at the commission, he's a fixture. He's on the citizens advisory group, and he's, he represents you very well. So I just want to say with respect to questions around affordability, not to go to that other item, but as a ratepayer advocate, I'm listening to everything and taking everything in because I too see those graphs, and there was one of the days where we had a big conversation at the PC about it. The things we can do are the things that we can do now to make those changes in the future, are the decisions we have to make, and there's trade-offs. A lot of it is around capital. So I think we, as an agency, and I know our staff, our general manager, Dennis Herrera, we all want this, certainly I as a ratepayer advocate, and our mayor of San Francisco, Daniel Lurie, who's been mayor now for six months on the job, he's expecting us to make those decisions together. And so I think transparency is good. The time that we have is a good opportunity to get ahead and make those decisions. And I just wanted to get up and say thank you for everything you do on behalf of the PUC. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Board of Directors. I am Nagina Shuri. I'm the Senior Water Resource Engineer for Bosca, and I'm also leading the efforts on Bosca's long-term reliable water supply strategy, what we call Strategy 2050, that many of you already know. And as part of the development of Strategy 2050, which is the work we started in January of this year, and we're going to work on that for the next two years, we're going to continue to have regular meetings with you all, updating you on what we've been working on. And shown on this slide is kind of the planning sessions that we have scheduled for the board in the year 2025. So in May, we focused on reviewing the water reliability risks and shared some information on our scenario planning, and, which we're currently working on. We've took all your, you know, all the input that you provided, and we have used it on what we are working on right now with our scenario planning and what we're going to be presenting to you tonight. And then tonight, we will be discussing some of these potential projects and actions that are coming forward from, from our work, and trying to get your feedback on ones that we should move forward with to further evaluate, and if there is anything else we are, we have not included in that list. And we're really hoping to engage with you all tonight on this, this work that we're working forward on. The other 2025 planning session that we have for later this year, for in the fall, this will focus on reviewing some of the research we will be doing on that affordability in the region. You know, this, we've heard tonight from Aaron Corvenova about their study. We're doing something similar as well, looking at affordability and assessment on that and what that looks like in the Bosca region, and we're hoping to present some of that later this year to you all. Now, the goals for today's meeting is really to share the process used for screening and sorting, what the new water reliability projects and actions are. So we're going to identify them through Strategy 2050, and then seek some feedback on a short list of either potential water supply projects and actions, and this is something I'm going to define later in another slide, as well as some near-term priority actions. These are things that we can work on in the near term, in the next five years. And then we're going to review some of the next steps for project and action development. Now, as we are going through the next few slides, there's going to be a lot of materials on some of these potential projects and actions. Kind of consider the following questions as we're reviewing the next few slides. So of the potential 14 water supply project actions, which should we further evaluate? Which are things that we should kind of look more into? And then of the 10 near-term priority actions, which should be considered? These are things that are near term in the next five years. And then again, are there other projects and actions not currently included in this list that we should be looking at? So these questions are, obviously, they're meant to guide our discussion tonight, to really shape strategy that reflects kind of like a full range of perspectives within our region. We presented similar discussion questions to the agency representatives, our water management representatives. This took place last week, so we presented the same questions to them, but we're hoping after tonight, I mean, this is the beginning of our discussions on this, you will start to have some more internal conversations with your agency and your representatives. And then we're going to have monthly meetings with them through the Water Management Representatives Meetings to kind of bring forward some of these projects to evaluate them. So what does it mean with these projects and actions that we're considering? These are things that could improve water supply reliability in the future, under what we're looking at with Strategy 2050. And when we think of projects, we generally, this involves physical infrastructure. So what you think of as, you know, a decel, or water reuse, or stormwater capture, these are things that are going to be a little more long-term, going to take a lot more time to develop. Whereas actions involve more non-infrastructure interventions, such as policies, programs, and contractual agreements. One example of this is, you know, Bosca has many conservation programs that your, your agencies can tap into if they want. Are there other things that we could kind of have as a subscription program moving forward? And then planned or potential project and actions, you know, we looked at individual agency projects. So we didn't want to just have, you know, 14 or 20 of our own projects that we're looking at. We really talked with each of your agencies to see what you're already planning or conceptualizing into a list that we would be putting into the Bosca model. This is through Riverware, and we would be modeling that out. So we have this list that we already had of potential projects from each of your agencies, and then we wanted to look beyond that of what else should we be looking at in collecting and evaluating moving forward. And this is kind of the development timeline or of our role with the project and actions. Initially, this was through our One Water Roundtable series back in 2022. We collected a lot of these potential projects from each of your agencies. These are local projects, and we collected information on each of them. And this year, we actually had, through our water conservation database, your representatives actually put in information from each of those projects. So we had more in-depth analysis on what the yield would be or the cost would be for some of these local projects. So we had that list moving forward, and then we identified those initial lists, and then we developed this new project and action concepts. This is through partnerships with a stakeholder group that we had, as well as tonight, we're hoping to have some more board input on what these might look like moving forward. And then what the next step will be is really developing these comparative metrics. So what can we look at? What things can we use to compare one project against another? You know, we can look at cost or dry year reliability benefit. What are the water quality impacts of them, or regulatory complexity? We're going to bring this back to the WMR meetings to really evaluate what these metrics should be moving forward, so we can compare each project with one another. And in between that time, we're hoping, again, for more discussions from you all with, with your agencies, with your representatives, to see what to move forward. And then we would develop a portfolio, so a list of projects and actions that would fulfill kind of what we're looking at in the future. So we can evaluate potential portfolios to meet our water reliability goals in the future, dependent on what that future might look like. And I kind of touched on that last time of, you know, we're looking at planning scenarios, so not just one scenario moving forward, but a kind of like an envelope of what that water supply reliability might look like in the future. So I mentioned we have that existing projects and actions that were collected. This is kind of a broad summary of what that looks like, that we had gathered from each of your agencies. A majority of them are, these are either on the planning, design, construction, but most of them are on this conceptual phase of what that would look like. And most of them are on the recycled water. There were about 18 potential projects within the region, and then there were groundwater. This was either looking at additional groundwater wells that could be placed in or fixing ones that aren't being used. There were a few stormwater projects. This is through CCAG, the City-County Government of San Mateo. And then we have additional conservation and surface water projects. So there's a huge list. We have that in place. Again, that's, we don't want to overlook that. Those are things that are local projects. We are going to be looking and evaluating those projects, but we wanted to see what, what else could we do? What else could we kind of evaluate beyond these 70 projects and actions? So the approach to identifying them, as I mentioned before, we had numerous workshops and meetings. We had water management representative meetings in May, kind of going over some of the risk assessments, risks within your agencies. And then we also had the board planning session in May, where we heard from you all on some of the risks impacting your, your water supply in the future. And then we also had a One Water Roundtable Workshop. This is with outside stakeholders, as well as some of the Bosca agencies that came together to kind of brainstorm on what potential projects can move forward. And so through the, these forums, we actually had an initial list of 29 potential new projects and action concepts that were identified for further consideration. Now, we had the 29 potential projects and actions. We broke them out into three different groups. As I mentioned, we have the near-term priority actions. These are things that could be implemented in the near term, in the next five years, or we already have it in our work plan to work on. And it may support specific time-sensitive needs. Is there regulatory compliance needs in the, in the near future that we would assist our, our agencies on? And then it could represent kind of these initial steps towards another water supply project and actions. And there were actually two or three of them that would be near-term, but could support some of these like long-term projects in the future, and would align with and directly build on what our current role is. And then the second group is these funding actions, so supporting funding or financing of other projects and actions. What would these funding mechanisms be? This is part of another part of Strategy 2050. I'll, I'll touch on that later, but this is not part of the project and actions. I'll, I'll touch on that later, but this is not part of the project and actions. This is to support it moving forward. And it doesn't have any direct water supply benefit. I think the most important part of what a potential water supply project and action would be is to have a direct water supply benefit for our region. And it would typically require multi-phase implementation. So this would be beyond a five-year horizon. And after that period of time, like we want to look at what Basca's role is in that. So again, we just want to evaluate the potential of some of these projects and actions. The role of Basca is going to be evaluated at a different time, but we really wanted to see what potential projects are out there. Again, we had, this is just the timeline. This shows you what we did with the 29 projects and actions. We had 29 of them. We asked if there was a potential near-term action. There were 10 of them that were, so we put them in a group. And then we asked if there was a direct water supply benefit. And if there was, we categorized it into, into another one, 14 of them that we were going to be talking about tonight. And then from the rest, we looked if either it has a funding strategy applied to it or if we can consider it with alignment with other projects and actions or other tasks within 2050. And so we, we broke it out to these various groups. Now, I'm going to go through kind of in depth with what these kind of near-term priority actions are. We're going to start there, talk about some of the funding actions briefly, and then most of the time is going to be talking about the, the main projects and actions that we're looking into. So first is to expand on the collaboration with wastewater agencies and regional entities. We already, SFPUC and the wholesale customers, we have quarterly water quality meetings that's really beneficial to all of us. We also, Basca participates in BACWA. It's the Bay Area Clean Water Agency Meetings. This is with the wastewater agencies. They also have meetings quarterly. This took place actually a few days ago. So there might be ways in which we can expand on that and, and with the collaboration within those groups. So we want to evaluate what that potentially would look like, how we can kind of continue on with that collaboration. The second is a technical work group for onsite reuse. You know, we want to, similar to what we have with water loss, we have a water loss work group where we talk about many of the regulations on water loss within California. But maybe we can develop a work group to coordinate on kind of the regional needs and collaboration opportunities related to onsite reuse. So there's rulemaking from the state currently in progress, but the state board really anticipates a board adoption sometime this year or early next year on water quality standards for onsite reuse, treatment and reuse of non-potable water. So having a work group within the Basca region where we can kind of come together and, and discuss some of what these regulations, the impact that it might have on your agency and some opportunities to collaborate on potential new projects moving forward. The third is a regional model ordinance for non-functional turf. So we can develop what we call a model ordinance. So a policy template for banning non-functional turf, either in, you know, parking lots, along roads, sidewalks, and in front of businesses. So as part of making conservation a way of life, it prohibits using potable water to irrigate non-functional turf that's located on commercial, industrial, and institutional properties. But it's really hard and difficult to define what that non-functional turf is and how to really apply it to your service area. So this model ordinance will kind of provide a template to define what a non-functional turf might be and provide some recommendations on its application. The fourth is an education and communication program for water conservation and drought response. So we want, we have plenty of some subscription programs, conservation programs that we have rebates, mostly on the residential side, but is there more we can do on the communication of those programs we already have in place? This could mean, you know, social media platform where you can kind of tie into some of these programs that we already have. Or, you know, we, we are not in a drought right now, but is there materials that we can kind of put on our website? It's on the backend, right, of all the, the things that we could do during a drought that when it occurs, we have the common language and we have all this material that we can kind of present in a quicker fashion? The next is a San Francisco Regional Water System Wheeling Policy and Structure. So develop kind of a policy or a template agreement for exercising wheeling for conveying water from outside the SFPUC system through the regional water system. So what would that look like? Either if it's a physical wheeling or paper exchange, kind of evaluating what that might look like moving forward? The next is an intertie schematics and assessment. This is something that we've heard a lot from your agencies on where are the interties within the agencies? You know, we don't need a direct latitude, longitude of what it looks like, but just have an overall schematic of where the existing or potential system interties might be to really support water transfers moving forward, either within or outside the Basca region. The Asset Management Working Group and Program. During our previous board and WMR meeting, we have heard that aging infrastructure is a big concern moving forward for your agencies. And, you know, although Basca, we can't directly provide that assistance on this matter, we can really provide kind of a forum for your member agencies to either collaborate. You can share your best practices and discuss some asset management strategies. Or we can provide a subscription-based partnership, similar to the other subscription programs that we have. We can get a qualified vendor to provide some of these services to support asset inventory, condition assessment, lifecycle planning, and risk management. We heard a little about the commercial audits and retrofit rebates. We have a lot of programs rebates on the residential side. Is there more we can do on the commercial industrial side, CII side? And we've, we've looked at some other programs through LEDWP. Is there other ones that we could provide for your agencies? And then we have the AMI Working Group. Again, with this, we can bring in the member agencies to share some of the experiences and best practices around AMI and water use management, some of the data behind that. And we'll be hearing about our drought report after this presentation. And you'll hear more about the importance of storing AMI data. So this work group can really support the regional coordination on that and coming together with this. We got two more with the ISG Transfer Implementation Plan. We can investigate some of the institutional barriers and solutions to individual supply guarantees, transfers. So what does that look like? You know, what is the legal and policy and operational recommendations that would enable a kind of a more streamlined transfer if anyone's interested? And then this is not necessarily part of the near-term priority actions, but we had an emergency response mutual aid agreement where we can kind of discuss, are there ways we can kind of pull together in case there's an emergency to provide some mutual aid? And what would that potentially look like? So this will actually be considered in a different task. So we have an emergency reliance, resilience task within Strategy 2050, but this is something to keep in mind in the near term too, of, of what that potential mutual aid would look like. So now I talked about all the near-term priority actions. We also had two funding actions. So this is either a local project funding program, providing funding on to Basca agencies to support or develop dry year water supply projects. So a program that could provide a cost share for implementing alternative water supply projects in, in exchange for dry year reductions for the SF Regional Water System purchases. Or if there's a private funding opportunities, this is either through a corporation or foundation that can work together to provide funding, either, you know, for example, for onsite reuse, if there's partnerships within the region on this. Now, that's all of the funding and near term. Next is going to be like the meat of it, the potential water supply projects and actions. Again, this is preliminary. These are things that kind of are in addition to what the local projects are moving forward, but we really wanted to see every possible project that might be available within the region. So the first is the Regional Stormwater Project. We have been in communication with CCAG. They're the City County Association of Government of San Mateo to really develop some of these regional stormwater capture and reuse projects, which may include, you know, some satellite facilities and or dry weather runoff treatment for non-potable reuse. But we wanted to evaluate what the, the water supply benefit might be. And that's a little harder when it comes to the, the stormwater projects, but there is these partnerships where we can kind of really evaluate what that would look like within the region. But we also want to talk to outside of San Mateo, maybe in Santa Clara, to see if there's other partnerships where they're looking at some of these stormwater projects. The next is a satellite facility for distributed reuse, to develop a satellite treatment facility for purified water, for groundwater recharge and potential future direct reuse, if this is viable. So we spoke with One Shoreline. They're actually also in San Mateo, but they're speaking with a lot of the golf courses throughout the Bay Area to see if there's any potential on water reuse within that. So if, if there's a potential for us to collaborate with them on some of these projects moving forward. The third is a technical assistance program for onsite reuse, is to develop a program to provide technical assistance to Basca agencies that are interested in implementing an onsite reuse program. So what would that look like? Again, what's the feasibility within the region? How much would that cost? These are preliminary ways. We just want to evaluate if this is even possible and, and worth it for us to kind of evaluate. The next is a Tuamee River Groundwater Recharge and Banking Partnership. And this would look at the potential of San Francisco to have a partnership with Tuamee River Irrigation Districts on groundwater banking during wet years. Again, this would not be something that Basca would take on themselves, but we want to further evaluate if, what the potential is to see how feasible it is and how much water they would yield during dry years. And this is within San Francisco's Alternative Water Supply Plan where, where they're looking into that. There's also new partnerships for groundwater banking, establishing partnerships for out-of-the-region groundwater bank with linked water supply. For example, with Valley Water. What would that look like and where would these be located moving forward? We also have the conserve water transfer with Tuamee River Irrigation Districts. This is again within the exploration of San Francisco's Alternative Water Supply and that section on San Joaquin Valley and up-country projects to kind of explore potential transfer opportunities on the Tuamee River and throughout the San Joaquin Valley. And then the Regional Groundwater Management and Conjunctive Use Program. This is to develop kind of a regional conjunctive use program to facilitate regional supply optimization, to really maximize the availability of groundwater for dry year water supply benefit. So what this would look like is to get water during wet years at a lower rate in exchange for commitments to increase pumping in dry years. So what would that look like in reducing the San Francisco Regional Water System purchases moving forward? We also have some fun projects. We're looking into some new developments, new technology. We're really asked all of our, you know, during our stakeholder engagement, if there's really any new technology we should be looking at. And one of these are the D cell buoy pilot program. And it's a wave-powered D cell buoy. It's known as the Iceberg System. It's new to me. I, I didn't know much about it, but it converts seawater into freshwater using a mechanical wave energy. So it doesn't use as much energy, but we don't know the feasibility of it within the Bay Area. I know this is something that they were looking at in Central. They were looking at it, I believe, close to Santa Barbara for this technology. The next is a regional collaboration on San Francisco Bay D cell. So looking at opportunities on regional collaboration regarding a potential San Francisco Bay D cell project. This is, you know, partnership maybe with Valley Water on this of, you know, where would this be located for us to construct a small D cell facility within the Bay Area and how much would be, what the yield would be and the cost would be moving forward? Another one that we, we looked at is the fog collection subscription program. So North Coast has already had a pilot program where they looked into this. This was in partnership, I think, with Cal State Monterey and UC Santa Cruz where they looked at the, looked at collecting fog, you know, and within that region. So is this technology, could this be applied to other agencies, especially ones that are coast, on the coast? You know, if it's Daly City or San Bruno, how much water can we actually get from this? I don't know, but we're, we might be evaluating some of these smaller scale projects as well. The next is a Valley Water, SF Regional Water System Regional Supply Optimization Program, where we can kind of establish a framework for common customers of both the, the agencies to source swap between Valley Water and SFPUC. It's a kind of free capacity for single-source users of either system. Again, we don't know what that would look like, you know, if, if there's a drought in the region, we're all pretty much impacted, but what, if there is a potential for us to source swap, what would that look like? Then we have the Regional Net Zero Program. This allows agencies to fund water use efficiency or water reuse projects within the Basca service area that would offset the use of SFPUC supplies. So for example, one agency that has met their water efficiency standards already, but they can fund other agencies to meet theirs in order to obtain that difference in the water supply. So what would that also look like? We got two more. The intertie development and optimization. This is what I had talked about before in our near term, where we're looking at a schematic of where the interties are within the region. This is going beyond that of being able to optimize some water transfers within the system and seeing if there's any additional interties that might be developed. You know, we had looked at the West Side SFPUC Valley Water intertie before. This is through the Bay Area Regional Reliability Program. Is there a way for us to evaluate similar interties? And then finally, there's a debt financing for distributed infrastructure, really establishing a program for debt financing for, for distributed infrastructure projects that really mostly provide water conservation or water reuse. In the concept, context of water conservation, it refers to really borrowing funds, you know, through municipal bonds, loans to pay for some of these small-scale water-saving systems rather than having these large centralized infrastructure. So this can fund, you know, high-efficiency irrigation controllers, smart water meters or turf replacement or other programs. So that's a lot. I know it was a, a long list for, you know, going through all of the near term as well as some of these potential projects moving forward. And again, this is preliminary. We are going to be working with each of your agencies, with the WMRs on this. with the WMRs on this. But we wanted to bring it out to all of you as well. As I mentioned before, the next step is to develop some of these comparative metrics, you know, what, how can we compare one project against another? But what we're hoping tonight is just opening up the discussion on these discussion questions of, you know, the 14 water supply projects and actions that I went through pretty quickly, which should be further developed? And then of those, or evaluated? And then of the 10 near-term priority actions, which should be further considered? And if there's something else, both on the project side and the action side, that we should look on, look to? Again, we're still gonna keep those 70 local projects, we don't want to lose those, but this is more about going beyond that to see what other projects are within the region. So with that, I will open the floor. Thank you.
Hey. You're good? You're good? Okay. I'll make it easy, just do all the ones with my name and Hayward on there. Here's your focus. No, I think multiple folks said affordability, so that can be consolidated into one, and it sounds like we have a good head start with all the work that SFUC is doing. I do want to advocate for protecting critical infrastructure and highlight sea level rise. I do want to keep that at the forefront of our minds, particularly seeing what's happening in the news, I think it's something that we should continue to focus on. And that can also be part of that emergency planning topic that you highlighted earlier. And that can be combined with the impacts of climate change from fire. So maybe we can do some combination there. And then continue outreach for communities. I know that we have a lot of classes and courses through the programs that we talked about at the last meeting that is distributed, but I think that outreach there can be a little bit stronger for my community at least. It seems like the library seems to be a good distribution list, and making sure that it gets on that list would be helpful. And I'm not sure if other cities are the same, but I think that's been one of the biggest resources for our community in doing outreach for any topic. So maybe there's something we can do there. And TikTok, apparently, that's like big. So I'm noticing that a lot of social media is transitioning to more of those platforms. And then I'm also interested in the public-private partnerships and seeing if we can combine any of these efforts in terms of funding with the public-private partnerships. So hopefully that can consolidate some of the wish list items I have on here.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Stone. Followed by Director Snyder, and then...
Is that Jordan or Zichterman? Zichterman, there you go.
Okay.
Hi, great, thank you for the presentation and all the work that's being done. Just a few thoughts and then just a question. I think for, I agree with Director Andrews, affordability, most important piece. And I think for me, before advancing the 14 P&amp;As that you referenced, I think it'd be more critical that we all have a clear understanding of what our actual water supply risks are, including projected demand. I don't want to see other agencies kind of have a similar issue that Palo Alto recently had, where we spent about a half million dollars on an alternative water supply study that really turned out to be unnecessary. And I think that's an ongoing risk that we all face. I think it's also equally important that we fully understand the risks identified through our drought modeling, to ensure that we are not inadvertently overbuilding or investing in infrastructure that we might not actually need. One thing that was highlighted in our CEO's memo, that I agree, I think we need to also carefully evaluate the potential affordability impacts associated with different demand and supply scenarios, to ensure that our planning is remaining really kind of aligned with our ratepayer interests and long-term financial sustainability. And then, I think a question, and maybe something that we could also do, a question and maybe a recommendation. So the SFPUC's 2021 Long-Term Vulnerability Assessment provided some really great insight into the impacts of climate change on the regional water system. That's about five years old now, and I think that's going to be something that is really going to impact our projected demands and infrastructure, et cetera, and ultimately the costs associated with all these projects. So do we have, do we have a plan to do a kind of, to I guess, commission an updated assessment for that, based on kind of the ongoing climate change and climate science is constantly changing as well? So it seems like it'd be time to revisit that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's an updated plan, but we are, through Strategy 2050, doing our own scenario planning, where we kind of are evaluating multiple scenarios, climate change included in that, where we are communicating with SFUC on their inflow hydrology numbers, but plugging that into our Bosque model. So that's the Riverware Model. So it's working with them, with their study, but this was, would be within the Bosque model. Okay.
I was just gonna add, and not to interrupt, but you'll recall at a prior meeting, we set a kind of quadrant system that Nagin talked about, where we're looking at different scenarios for water supply and water demand availability. So we continue to expect to use that model. You won't find us coming to a conclusion that a particular project is necessarily good in all scenarios, right? It might only be a project that is worthwhile to do in a low-water availability scenario and a high-water demand scenario. And so that's one of the, that's one of the interesting things that's going to come out of this in terms of ranking. And then the last thing I would say is that we are doing contemporaneous with this, a new demand study. And so we should know by the end of the year, kind of where the demand is projected out to 2050, within some sort of envelope. And so that'll give us better guidance as well. So just wanted to add that, sorry to interrupt Nagin.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Director Snyder, and then Director Zichterman.
Thank you, Enwell. Looking at the short-term or the near-term projects, and I think Director Andrews mentioned this, and we talked about it when we were up at the College of San Mateo, projects that cover multiple things, so not just wastewater, but stormwater. So on that first bullet point where it says expand on collaboration with wastewater agencies, can that also include stormwater entities, especially as we're working on green infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay. We might be the only city here in Northern California, American River. Our artificial turf, our fake grass ban is in place, and everybody that has it has to remove it by 2029 on that. So what happens when you're a little city and we get the Chronicle? The Chronicle's always giving environmental directions that work for everybody else but don't work in our systems. We have in-vessel composting, for example, we can't have biodegradable plastic bags. So if we're going to do that messaging, we should make sure that it works for all of the entities on that. And I will say, and we're very lagging on this, we are trying to come up with design, model designs, low-water use. It's drought tolerant, it could be California native, whatever, but to give people options that are low maintenance, instead of putting in fake grass on that. The mutual aid one offline, I think we can talk a little bit about our experience, because I think, at least between Millbrae, Hillsborough, and Burlingame, we've been working on that. And when we put in our new water tanks, Burlingame lent us their water in that time period. So there's some good examples there, including what Hillsborough's trying to do right now. I don't want to steal their thunder. The groundwater conjunctive management, and it made me realize that I have, I know our city north of us uses groundwater, and I don't know if that aquifer sits under Millbrae, I've never seen a map on that. It might be nice to show us the aquifer maps, so that all of us know if some adjacent agency is using groundwater, and we should be worried about subsidence on that. And/or can we, where we are a flooding city, can we be a partner with helping San Bruno, for example, restore its aquifer on that? I think those are great plans. The Chronicle just ran a couple of articles on fog collection. I have them in my to-read pile, so I haven't read them all, but Cal Fire used to tell me, pat me on my back and say, Millbrae's in the fog zone, but now we're high fire risk. So fog is changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Zichterman, followed by Director Jordan.
Thank you, Chair. It just seems to me, as we're talking about potential water projects and actions, that maybe there's a category of considerations or risks. And I'm not sure if that's part of the Strategy 2050 table of contents somewhere, but I'm thinking about all these factors that folks are bringing up, and there, a lot of them are risks to consider in deciding which projects or actions we want to embark on. For example, climate change would be one. What kind of, reading my own writing here, what kind of regulatory requirements might be coming, particularly with regard to PFAS, microplastics has been mentioned? How might that impact our demand and our water supplies? Security, susceptibility, terrorism kinds of things, what might those considerations, how might that impact our water supplies? For example, maybe we need to diversify supplies, rather than having our eggs all in one or two baskets. And then demand growth uncertainty. So there's a number of these factors that we might want to put into a bucket of considerations as part of this strategizing that we're doing. Then on the specific projects, a couple that came to my mind, and I don't know if they've been talked about and dismissed already, but let me know if they have. The Bay Area is ringed by dams. There are impoundments in the foothills on both the peninsula and East Bay. Have those impoundments of water, mostly for recreational and some for water supply already, but have they been quantified as a potential emergency or drought, fourth, fifth, dry year source of water? Where we're going to give up our recreation or local storage for meeting supply that's needed now because we're short, because of a prolonged drought in San Francisco, cutbacks, for example? And we might have to put packaged treatment plants in to be able to use that water, but if we, if each agency or city had identified those and procured equipment that could treat water in an emergency at a low level, but hey, when you're in a drought, you need every drop, that might be a worthwhile source to consider. And then groundwater, you have Regional Groundwater Conjunctive Management Program. I'm not sure if that includes the idea of doing more emergency supply wells like Palo Alto has done, we have them at Stanford, where a number of wells are drilled, not for normal use, such as have to worry about aquifer long-term supply availability, but for short-term use, groundwater is that bank, that the surface waters and imported waters may need to be supplemented in those times with local groundwater. Those are just some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Jordan, followed by Director Showalter.
Thank you, Chair. This is a long and impressive list, so it's kind of hard to react, you know, on the spot, but a few ideas on it at least. You mentioned a couple times in there onsite reuse, so are you thinking of sort of reuse to landscape irrigation, or reuse, recycle the water to original purpose, I guess, or some combination of both?
We look at both, but it's mostly for non-potable reuse.
So converting it to non-potable for the second use of the water when it then becomes groundwater, to some extent. But you could also, there are systems that can do onsite recycling for large users, you know, laundry, commercial laundries or pools, as an example. And so if, let's say there's 100 outdoor pools in the area, these are quite susceptible to recycling of the water with fairly low-cost system and some kind of incentive and technical standards. So you were mentioning technical work groups, so that might be worth looking at. And then I know that the D, one of the D-SALS you mentioned was the, you know, offshore buoy, you know, wave-powered, or you can go deep and water pressure power it, I know, but, but regular D-SAL or the recycled treatment using RO is highly driven by the cost of electricity. The, so it turns out San Francisco Power recommends using Hetch-Echie power for newer existing large facilities, and they have fairly attractive rates. Now, whether we can get this at Bosque or whether it's San Francisco, we have to work that out, but they, their power being maybe one-third the cost of what PG&E might be, it might change the economics of D-SAL at either end, either side of the bay, particularly if you're near a San Francisco Power facility. So that, I think, is worth looking at. And then I really like the idea of the wheeling policy. I'm taking this as some sort of standard approach to wheeling through the San Francisco system and how would we make that work? I think that would be really helpful, so that we're not all calling up Steve and saying, hey, can we figure out how to wheel from, you know, A to B? So, thank you.
Okay, Director Showalter, followed by Director Mellinger.
Thank you, and also I know this, because I'm joining remotely, we all have to do these roll call votes, and I just want to thank everybody for being so understanding about that. Anyway, a couple things I wanted to mention. First, just right off the bat, I thought that Director Andrews' comments were really right on point, except of course that it shouldn't just be Hayward, it should be all of our communities. I know that was tongue-in-cheek. And I was also really interested in the idea of risk. I also serve on the Santa Clara, I know we all serve on various different things, I serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board. And one of the things that we do is, through that, is they do these stress tests and think about what kind of could be the worst risk that the system could deal with financially. And I think that that would be, that might be an interesting exercise for us to do, for the, you know, Project 2050 to do, the water managers to think about. And then, and I think just the idea of considering things in terms of risk is really a valuable way to formulate ideas. And then I wanted to put in a plug for distributed infrastructure. I think that that has a lot of possibilities, and I think that it's really important, whenever we can, to combine that with our ideas for complete streets. You know, we're all, all of our communities are trying to promote active transportation, and part of what we hear a lot about in Mountain View, and I'm sure you hear too, is that everybody likes to walk and bike on shady streets better, and where there's sidewalks. So I think that combining the distributed infrastructure with the complete streets is, should be kind of a goal. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Mellinger, followed by Director Pierce.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Looking at these items, what I see... Looking at these items, what I see as one of Bosca's greatest strengths is it serves as a regional forum on water issues. And so the items that I find most appealing on here are the ones that sort of play to that strength. In particular, having the Intertie Schematic and Assessment Project, and again, the project on Intertie Development and Optimization is something that I think could build a tremendous amount of resilience in our water system. Groundwater recharge in general is, helps to ensure resilience in the system, especially, you know, none of us want to draw on groundwater, but in the event of a severe drought where we may have to, having banked groundwater in wetter years could be a real boon. I like the idea of a model ordinance for residential non-functional turf bands, but in general, yeah, what I'm, you know, the AMI Working Group, in general, what I'm seeing is sort of the strongest things for us to be focusing on are things that build regional water expertise and strengthen the resilience of the regional water system. I also do want to echo and share my support for Councilmember Showalter's comments on anything that we can do to integrate active transportation in the right-of-way of the water system as we're doing this work is something that's also tremendously important and helps to build community resilience and reduce our climate impacts as well. Thank you.
Okay. Director Pierce, followed by Director Weed.
Thank you. This is relatively mind-boggling, actually, but the things that really resonate with me are the things that bring together people to work on things and that there's some commonality. So whether it's the expanding on the collaboration with the wastewater agencies and the regional entities, people learning things together, that they can share that information and then that can be shared throughout Bosca, I think is helpful. We've heard a number of times about the education and communication programs for water conservation, so the more that it's elevated, the more we're able to do with that. So any of the programs in the near-term priorities that focus on those strengths, as Director Mellinger said, I think is, would be really beneficial. When you get further out, I'd be looking at the things that really enable us to do, to reach further, which would be like that Tuolumne River groundwater recharge and banking partnerships, partnerships or groundwater banking, and the idea of linking us more with irrigation districts, with the conserved water transfers, sort of, since we have no control over other people, building those relationships, enabling them to see some of the benefits so that we get better use out of the water, I think might be useful. Thank you.
From a water supply standpoint, it's not there. Recycled water has a number of concerns that have not been resolved, the permeate. It is a, the permeate of your recycled water is a hazardous waste under CIRCLA with the concentrations of PFAS. No answer for it. So as you look, and water is cheap. When we started this organization, San Francisco water was a dollar a unit, now it's almost $6, a 600% increase. And we have room for additional growth in those water rates without impacting our local economy when compared to other utilities. One of our constrictions is the cost, the cost elements is power. Not only can we look to San Francisco and their power, we have a power provider and producer, which may well be able to rival WAPA rates, but we have the ability, with AI, we're going to double the power in this country. Power will no longer be an issue in our water resource planning. So if you step back for a moment, we can wrap our heads and minds about all of these other neighborhood projects, et cetera, but in the big picture, we don't have an issue. Sat Valley Water has the ability to bring in 75,000 acre-feet of federal water. In their system, they're using about half of it. We, our value of our water is more than 10 times that of the agricultural users. Under the sigma, we've got the basis of a water market. There is no limit on our water potential, even with unimpaired flows and all of the other issues that were being raised by the no-growth community. We can, we can afford it. Thank you. Hey, Director Dogan.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the work you put into this. I think when you look at this list, there's a lot of difficult concepts and difficult projects, and they're going to take a lot of work to get them done. I want to reiterate the, you know, we've been hearing a lot of regional efforts, and I think that is going to make a lot of sense. I think for a long time, all of our agencies did it alone, and I think we really need to do it together. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Director Ragsdale.
Just the thank you for your hard work, just, I second and third that. And also with regard to having the water management rep here, thank you so much for that presentation and for all of you guys really working together and all of these working groups that you've talked about that are ongoing or contemplated, I think that's just extremely valuable. We could all sit here, most of us aren't engineers, although there, people do know a lot about water here, but I think it's fantastic that these working groups are really helping each other, like on the advanced metering and all of it. And then lastly, the, I loved your idea of the drought messaging, having that ready, you know, maybe under different scenarios, but having it ready to go, I think makes a lot of sense and also, again, another great shared resource. Thank you.
Okay. Director Nash.
Thank you. I would just like to highlight, as has been said, the impact of climate change on the water supply and just reiterate that. And also during an emergency, such as when we have an earthquake, to make sure that we highlight that, which I assume is going to be under the emergency resilience, but I think that's critical. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other board comments, you're done? Any public comment? It's now 9:48, 8:48, and we can't start a new topic without a motion to proceed, since our time has expired. So what I'd like to ask for is 30 minutes to continue with the drought report and the CEO reports. Close session, it'll be super quick if we have one, but I'd like to ask for 30 minutes. Is anybody willing to make a motion to extend the meeting for 30 minutes?
Motion to extend, second.
Who is the, who is the primary, Pierce?
Director Manala.
Manala. Director Manala and Director Ragsdale. Snyder.
Snyder.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Director Andrews.
Aye.
Director Chambers.
Aye.
Director Duncan.
Yes.
Director Hamilton.
Aye.
Director Jordan.
Yes.
Director Kiesel.
Aye.
Director Manala.
Aye.
Director Mellinger.
Aye.
Director Mickelson.
Yes.
Director Montano.
Yes.
Director Nash.
Yes.
Director Piccolati.
Aye.
Director Pierce.
Yes.
Director Ragsdale.
Yes.
Director Schneider.
Aye.
Director Showalter.
Yes.
Director Stevenson. Oh, he left, okay. Director Stone.
Yes.
Director Vella.
Aye.
Director Weed.
Aye.
And Director Zichterman.
Aye.
unanimous.
Okay, thank you. It's 8:49, so we'll add 30 minutes to that. Next is the drought report. Tom Francis was going to have Kyle Ramsey, Remi, give the presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm excited to share that we have completed the 21 through 23 drought report. A little bit of background on this, during the 2014 through 2017 drought, we created a simple document that tracked some of the actions taken by your member agencies during the drought and documented the timeline of when certain actions were taking place. We use that as a guide for future droughts. For this report, we really wanted to dive a little bit deeper, do more of an analysis on what worked, what didn't, and have somewhat of a roadmap for future droughts. We had five project objectives, to document and evaluate drought actions and drought response measures. These could be things like watering restrictions or communication actions such as drought messaging campaigns, water waste restrictions, things of that nature. We also wanted to document the fiscal impacts and water quality issues that were observed. Fiscal impacts meaning, you know, staff resource time, do we need to remove staff from doing what they normally do to adequately, adequately focus on the drought? Also, how does this decrease revenue from some of the agencies affect some of their planning efforts? Quantify water use reductions achieved, not only as a entire service area, but also on a member agency by a member agency basis. Quantitatively analyze the effectiveness of these local DRMs, a little bit more on that later. And then identify lessons learned to support future planning, which is really the overall goal of this project. I won't go through all of these, but we essentially had a couple of slides, we condensed them into one to show the different executive orders taken by the governor's office and then the State Water Resources Control Board initiating six regulatory actions to actually implement those executive orders, and then five actions taken by the SFPUC. Bosca issued six statements regarding the drought, and we posted those on our website. And then other drought actions taken by other agencies, such as Valley Water. The report has a more detailed list, but we wanted to give a high-level overview. The graph here shows how agencies phased from essentially not enacting any of their stages in their water shortage contingency plan to all applicable agencies enacting it by the summer of '22. You can tell that almost nobody was in stage zero in April of '21, which is when the drought was first declared, and then by summer of 2022, all applicable agencies had enacted stage two. The next two slides show actions taken by the Bosca member agencies. Again, I won't go through all of these, but to provide a couple of examples, we had five categories of actions, water use restriction, demand actions, communication actions, and the percent of agencies that implemented each one of those. So, for example, weekly water restrictions, we had 96% of the agencies that actually implemented those water, weekly watering restrictions. For demand actions, for turf replacement rebates, 75% of the agencies in the service territory offered some version of turf replacement. This. Dead mic. The turf replacement rebates, we had 75% of our agencies that actually implemented, implemented those rebates and offered them to their customers. This doesn't necessarily mean that they had to participate through Bosca, but maybe they participated through Valley Water or offered it on their own. And then for communication actions, every single member agency updated their website. 88% used paper mailers for drought communication with their customers. Water waste actions, 84% notification via door hanger, and then we also had a, an other action section, so maybe something that we didn't think about in our survey to the agencies, they provided, you know, fines for wasteful water use or not serving drinking water other than upon request, and then the percentage is shown there on the right. Again, we have this detailed more in the report, so if you're interested to see what your agency implemented during that time, you can certainly review that. High-level overview of the Bosca drought response measures here. Website update, you know, we had a drought landing page that was pretty much ready to go as soon as the governor provided his executive order. We enhanced our water conservation programs, including increased rebate amounts, which were ultimately funded by the member agencies, attended workshops and town halls, community events. As I mentioned earlier, we issued several drought statements. We thought this graph was interesting to pull out. You can see the sharp increase in Bosca rebate program expenditures during, during the drought. This is due to a multiple of reasons. I mean, when droughts are front page, water conservation is on everybody's mind, you're going to get more program activity. That's what we saw during the last drought, too. But we also had a very large agency, ACWD, join the program, I want to say in 2020, 2021, and they have a large service area, big conservation team, and provided a lot more rebates. Also, for the rain barrel rebate program, we offered a tiered rebate system, meaning that based on the capacity, they would get a larger dollar amount. So I think this was more appealing to customers to do larger than just a 50-gallon rain barrel. Maybe they wanted to install a large cistern, something like that. But we did see a large uptick in '22, '23, which is really at the height of the drought for large-scale retrofit projects within the service area. Another interesting graph that tracks both the growth and the residential GPCD throughout the entire service area. I think the key takeaway here is that demand hardening has a, has contributed to lower water use reductions every drought. So we saw a sharp downtick during the 14 through 17 drought, a small rebound, but generally it stayed pretty consistent. And in Elizabeth's presentation earlier, it was pretty consistent with, with what we saw on like an individual agency basis, but stayed pretty consistent, and then we saw a 7.8% decrease across the entire service area in this most recent drought. We had a section on water quality issues, which remain an operational challenge. 40% of the agencies experienced water quality issues due to lower-than-usual water flows. It was most commonly known as nitrification, due to reduced flushing and increased water age following lower demand. Because of this, and because our agencies have gone through this before, 44% of them implemented preventative measures during this drought, and they changed their flushing operations to flush when and where needed, they proactively drained and cleaned reservoirs, was just another interesting part of the report to maybe influence future decision-making to plan for nitrification issues. All right. As I mentioned earlier, one of the big pieces of this was an effectiveness analysis. What DRMs worked? Can we attribute those DRMs to a lower water use in a particular service area? The only way to really do this is through AMI data. However, we ran into some challenges when we tried to do that. One of them was our agencies didn't have quick access to the data. It's a lot of data to store on your personal servers and in some cases required a larger cost than is inside the project scope for this type of work. So after a couple of months, we decided to scrap the effectiveness analysis and do more of a lessons learned for AMI data management. Three main discoveries came out of that. One is contract considerations, so secure long-term access to raw AMI data and ensure that the data retrieval is within a reasonable effort. Have additional data retrieval strategies, so establish mechanisms or routines for routinely downloading the data if it is readily available. And then working into the contract data ownership and storage to develop local data management solutions. We do have one of our agencies, Redwood City, that does download the data on a daily basis and keeps it within, within their own servers. But huge lessons learned, because I think half of our agencies have AMI, and I don't know how many of them know that, that data's not readily available when they need it. So all in all, preparing for the next drought, I think we talked about this a little bit tonight, but preparing your messaging before a drought is actually declared is incredibly important. a drought is actually declared is incredibly important. Being able to hit the ground running with putting in those mailers, launching the website, making sure that people are aware that water use restrictions are in play. And additionally, working with your regional partners to, to work out funding agreements, who pays for what during a large outreach campaign or a, you know, for a billboard or something of that nature. Also, continue to enhance the Basca suite of conservation programs. Are there programs that we need to look into and maybe tweak a little bit, increase the incentive, or perhaps scrap completely to make way for new, new programs? As I mentioned, advocating for continued research and demand hardening is really important. Every level of conservation you achieve, the next level is that much more difficult. So finding more creative ways and more creative programs to help incentivize reducing water use is going to be crucial. And then agencies may need to reevaluate effectiveness of their drought plans due to hardening, which I mentioned, and possible message fatigue. So yeah, those are the main findings of the report. If anyone's interested in delving a little bit deeper into it, the report is posted there, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the report. Just a quick question. Which strategies out of the communication strategies would be the most effective, given that we have limited dollars? Wanted to see where we should put our resources.
I believe that what we've heard from customers is bill inserts have been really key. You know, you get your bill, you have another piece of paper in there that says, hey, we're in a drought. This is how you can reduce your water use. Here are the programs that are available to you. Or online, email blasts have, we've seen that have been really effective, and, and online messaging.
Okay. I get my water bill online, so we'll have to think about that. And then the last question I have is the, the slide on the rebate programs. I do recommend that you connect with any groups that are like our Clean and Green Commission, because they can actually deploy a lot of these strategies and get the information out as well, including giving out more information about the rebate programs, because they tend to focus more on cleaning streets and planting trees, but they're not really talking about water conservation. At least I'm not seeing it. So I think that's another strategy we can deploy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Jordan.
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate this report. I was, and appreciate the recommendation on the AMI data storage, because we've, we've been a big fan at Prisma on AMI. We rolled it out during the 2014, 2017 drought, and that's when we learned it might be useful then. But that was, we didn't get to 100% until 2018. But so for this, the more recent drought, it was like the primary tool. And so looking back for five years of data would be nice, but we used it every day. I mean, a customer got an alert, either email or a text, the next day if he used an unusual amount of water. And then we called him the next day after that, you know? So it was, it was like a really rapid feedback system that I, I think we concluded was very, was very useful to cut down on at least leaks and water wasting and people ignoring the rules. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public on this item? If there are none, go to the next item, which is CEO reports. Mr. Schmeggel or...
I have a couple of very quick reports. Don't take up too much of your time. So the first is on the Tier Two Plan. We now have 11 agencies and a thermometer that have approved as of last night. So we're, we're doing well in that front, and most agencies have scheduled. I think Danielle has been giving you a hard time if you have not, if your agency has not yet scheduled a vote of the governing body. So you know who you are if you don't have it scheduled. But thank you for, for the 11 that have already completed it. On the Bay Delta Plan update, very quick update here. The, there are, there's one sort of development and one which is not on here, which is kind of a half-development. So the first development is that the, with regard to the Don Pedro relicensing, the water districts have issued a notice that they have a new environmental document, and that is using the Toame River Volunteer Agreement as its basis. And so that could be controversial, but we're waiting to see how that is evaluated or how that is responded to by the public. That's part of the environmental process. The other sort of, I'm looking at Nathan, but the non-update update is that we are expecting soon to get a full record of the trial court in order to start writing briefs for the appeal of the, the state board decision. And so that is not yet a real thing. They, they tried to, and they issued a defective transcript, and so we're, we're back to waiting for a real transcript. So those are our updates. I'm happy to take any questions on either of those items, but otherwise I'll let you move on to something else.
Good. Next item is mine, 9C, the CEO performance evaluation. This is going to be essentially the same as last year. The four just updated, changed CEOs, changed dates. As you remember, there's a section where you fill out the bubbles. You know, I call it numeric section because I've changed those codes to numbers so we can get medians and standard deviations, all that wonderful stuff. We have eight of those on leadership. We have five on management. Those are mandatory fields. Please, I do expect to see some not observed. Tom's relatively new. But please give me some input. There are four fields where you can say whatever you want in words. You know, that's important, too. So if, you know, feel free to give me those. Those are not required, but at least give me your bubble part. We plan to send out this election email. It's going to be Google Docs again. We're going to send out the email next, early next week. The due date is August 15th. That gives you like a little bit more than four weeks, so please participate. Again, that will contain CEO Schmeggel's performance report and CEO responsibilities and a background sheet on Basca. Next month, or next, next meeting, we'll have a closed session and go over the, my summation of all the input. We do not need to do a salary adjustment, because that's all part of his contract. He is getting a 3% increase on total compensation as part of the contract we approved last year. So that's what I have. Are there any questions on CEO evaluation? No. Okay. Closed session. We have 10 minutes?[1130.08]